I call upon the United States, America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, every day of justice.
So we have a few announcements tonight. We have a Fisher Sports team, unified track team that has been state runner-up and who are very talented. We would like to recognize them. We have someone who can come forward to speak on their behalf.
And President Stoller, I believe Coach Patrick Schooly is going to be on the call to share a little bit about the team and what they've done, but.
Yes.
And the coaches are going to come up too, so we want to congratulate the Fishers High School Unified Track and Field Team. They got second runner-up in the state. This is a unified team that has an inclusive and wonderful spirit, and they've worked really hard. And so I'd like at this time to have the coaches come up and talk about who you are and your year, your season, and introduce all the team members today.
Okay, this is, um, I'm Maggie, my first year coaching. Coach Schooly has been a truly amazing champion of this program. He's worked really hard and built something pretty spectacular. He was a great guy to go on any other sporting event I've ever been to. Half of our team is our typical athletes. I just think they're awesome, right? And some of them are state, and then half are A-level learners, they serve the university school. And it's truly a unified team. I've never seen, at any sport event, they are cheering for every single person, even if it's our team. When we see one runner-up, the team next to us is up cheering for us, right? It's so awesome. Every single person is an important part of the team. We have 54 athletes on our team this year, and every single one of them matters makes a difference, and it has our overall score and record, and, um, yeah, runner-up. And this is our student coach, Debbie. She's amazing. She's been helping me with everything about the team. I am just grateful to have even had a government committee because it's really shown me how to be a leader, and it's shown me what I want to do with my life from actually going to school to continue my education and tell me all kinds of capabilities and opportunities.
Wonderful. Is Coach Schooly on the call? Did he was going to call in? No, wasn't able to make it? Okay, okay. I personally just want to congratulate all of you. My daughter Krista Kobel is one of the team members, and she ran the 100 meter and the 400 meter relay. And I've watched all of you this year, and for those of you that are peer helpers, and your care, your dedication to your fellow peers, your love, your willingness to work with them, help them in every way possible. Your team and Coach Schooly and all the coaches, they are really the shining model of what happens when you come together and you are inclusive and you provide accessibility to people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So on behalf of the City Council, we just want to congratulate you on your wonderful win. And I understand you're going to be walking in the parade at Spark, and so that's awesome. So we have, I think the mayor has some, maybe some certificates and some remarks and some picture-taking.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Cecilia. To all the participants, congratulations. We're so proud of you. As Fishers residents, we couldn't be more excited to share in your success. And Council President Stoller and I have a certificate for each one of the participants in acknowledgement of your hard work and your efforts and achievements. And if you just want to come up, we'll hand them out to you. And then maybe we could, I don't know where we're going to grab a picture, maybe up on the, out on the stairwell perhaps, might be the best place actually to get this many people together. But Council President Stoller and I will meet you out there after we hand out the certificates, okay?
Mayor, I'm going to allow Councilor Kobel to do this because I just think it's more appropriate with her daughter and the team, and she's so excited about it.
All right.
Okay, moving on, our next announcement is we all know that Dr. Borf is the retiring Superintendent of HSE Schools, and he is in attendance. I saw him. I was going to say, I thought I saw him in the back when I walked in. And we'd like to address the council tonight. Dr. Borf, would you like to come forward, please? Thank you.
Six and a half years ago, I became a superintendent, and I wanted to express my gratitude for this spot through education.
Dr. Borf, I think the microphone is off. The microphone?
Am I on now?
There you go.
There you go. And I think it's noteworthy that I came in and address, am addressing the City Council right after you've recognized a sizable number of students who have done some outstanding work. But you know, this kind of achievement doesn't come just in a spontaneous combustion sort of way. It takes a community to make this happen. And this body represents our community in many ways and has done such a job. When I came in, we were partnering with the city. HSE was partnering with the city for fuel purposes, care of parking lots, and lawns. Today, however, we have several programs that get into our curriculum and instruction. You have provided opportunities for students in the first grade to do a national award-winning program at Ritchie Woods. Every first grader experiences this. I had two grandchildren this year who experienced that from different schools at first grade. And I can tell you, it's an experience that you'll not find in too many other communities. We are expanding some of these partnerships to include a hub-and-spoke experience where students are able to experience the trades for perhaps the first time. We're also looking at a, not looking, we are expanding in the agri-park so that students also have a different type of experience with the environment. We have partnerships that have expanded students' knowledge of what it means to have a municipality. One of my experiences when I first came in as I was working with students at Hamilton Southeastern High School was that the seniors, one of the seniors expressed that she was concerned about going out, leaving Fishers because she recognized that Fishers was not a normal place. It was a great place. It's a nurturing place, safe place, and a great place to be raised. She said, I don't know if I'm ready for the outside world. And one of the things that Mayor Fatness made available to us after hearing that story was a training program for students to understand, great places like Fishers don't just happen. And so the students experienced instruction in the different departments of the city and came away with a new awareness of what it is to raise and develop a community like Fishers. So tonight was an outstanding example of our students and their work, your commitment, your recognition of their work, and I thank you for that. I thank you for the commitments that you make and that I trust that you will continue making under Dr. Stokes, who will be coming in in just another week. So thank you, and I leave with great fondness for the work that the two partners have done. Thank you for making that happen.
Dr. Borf, I want to say thank you for the partnerships that you've created and the school system that you've helped maintain and build within our community. I mean, our school systems are a lot of the reasons why people have enjoyed this community. So thank you for that. Moving on, the Memorial Day Monument that was put in, it was the Gold Star Family Monument. Brad was a significant contributor to putting that together. We had, it was very important to this body. We had eight members of this body that contributed to the Gold Star Monument. And just want to recognize this since it was put in, since our last council meeting. Brad, could you provide us a brief update?
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody who donated to that. We, as Americans, for years and years, have always recognized our veterans with monuments in the United States and worldwide. But we've kind of neglected the people who survive when a veteran is killed in action. I can remember when I was a little kid, many, many years ago, riding my bicycle down the street, and in the window of a house would either be a Silver Star for a family who had a veteran on duty, and then if he was killed in action, it was changed to a Gold Star. And a Gold Star Mothers was created. Woody Williams, who is the last surviving veteran from World War II with the awards he's received, started 214, coming up with what's called the Gold Star Families Monument. And L. Alward, who is our emcee and does a great job of that, a few years ago, a father come up to him and said, you know, you're recognizing Gold Star Mothers. He says, I lost my son. I don't get recognized. And we kind of forget that, that when a person is killed, you have mother, fathers, brothers, sisters, uncle, aunts, and friends that are survivors that have to deal with that. And I am very, very proud that Fishers has agreed to install the Gold Star Families Monument, which is right in front of City Hall, a great location. And I thank everybody that has done that. If you attended the ceremony and watched, sorry for getting emotional, the Gold Star Families come forward, it's well worth it. Thank you very much.
Although we do not have a formal Health Department update tonight, I would like to take a moment to recognize the outstanding work of our Health Department. Most recently, the Health Department was accepted as presenters at the American Public Health Association National Conference, which is a very prestigious honor for public health professionals. The department will be presenting on the challenges and opportunities of creating a Health Department during the pandemic. We continue to be extremely proud of the hard work and dedication our Health Department in leading our community through the pandemic. Moving on to proclamations. In recognition of Pride Month, the council has released a statement that I would now like to ask Councilor Newman to read, please.
Hi, everyone. On a personal note, I come from a prideful family. In high school, I remember a fearful time for those I loved because of the Matthew Shepard story and others like it hit really close home. I can't imagine making a hospital visit or bearing a loved one simply just for them being who they are. I'm thankful that the rights of the LGBTQ+ community has progressed and that I've been able to witness milestones such as marriage equality through which my brother could marry his husband, increase workplace protections for my own son entering the workplace, the definition of crimes to include crimes motivated by sexual orientation or gender identity to protect those we care about, and increase the representation for those holding public office. It is with great pride, I can read the following pride statement on behalf of the City Council. On behalf of the Fisher City Council, we recognize June as Pride Month. This month and always, Fishers renews its commitment to making our community welcoming to all. This commitment goes beyond public statements and social media posts, but to the policies we have in place and the policies we continue to refine. Fishers stands with the LGBTQ+ community and acknowledges the discrimination that so often impacts these individuals. This council has always stood in unity against LGBTQ+ discrimination. In 2016, we acted by proclaiming Fishers as a community that would not stand for discrimination of any kind stemming from a person's sex, race, color, nationality, origin, religion, disability, age, or gender identity. That dedication continues today, from standing alongside students and parents to advocate for comprehensive anti-discrimination policy within our school system to instilling these policies into cities' operations. This Pride Month, residents should be comforted in the fact that your city, your public safety, and your community stands with LGBTQ+, and we welcome all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Next, we're moving on to service awards. We have Assistant Chief Gannon and Assistant Chief Taylor, who will be presenting the awards. I think we have two officers that have long worked to protect and serve our community, Dan Tucker and Ryan Pack, who are not with us this evening. Is that correct?
Correct. So we'll have three here with us tonight, Jamie Alvis, Sam Ralph, and Chuck Yeager, if they could come forward. First, thank you to the members of the council, mayor, city leadership, for allowing us the opportunity to recognize these gentlemen. I also want to take a second and let them know that Chief Gebhardt takes great pride in acknowledging all of our officers, and in particular, at these events, and he truly regrets not being here tonight as he already had plans to move his daughter up to New York for school. So he regrets not being here, and I would imagine, or wouldn't be surprised if he's already reached out to them individually to let them know how he feels about them. So I also want to take a moment to acknowledge some important folks who are behind these men in the room. So Lynn and the Yeager family, there's a big group back here, Melissa, Ashley and Jake with Officer Ralph, and Officer Alvis family, his clan of girls is all down south in Florida, but Joey, Addison, Erin, Elizabeth, and Charlotte are all away. But you have 60 years of service to the community and taking care of the citizens of Fishers, and that doesn't go without having the support of everybody back here behind them. So I want to take a moment to acknowledge them. So, thank you very much.
I want to thank each of you for protecting and serving our community. It has gained us awards, and we're very appreciative of your service to our community. Thank you. Next, we have the Finance Committee report. Councilor Weingard is not with us this evening, so Councilor George will be providing the Finance Committee update.
Yep, thank you. Just quickly, we've got three items on tonight's agenda that were reviewed and forwarded to the council. 6B, which is under the consent agenda, which is a fund transfer, and then items eight and nine were reviewed and sent on. I'll let Lisa go through the details when those come up, but I just want to let you know that those three were forwarded on. The other thing that we talked about was going forward, coming up with the different timings of the different meetings that will happen. We're heading into budget season, so we'll start to have those meetings for the council and then for the public to know when different opportunities are coming up. I think we've got to set up a couple of things for us to have some additional meetings, and then we can have that full calendar sent out. So that'll be coming shortly. And that's it.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, there are two items on tonight's consent agenda, a request to approve previous minutes, and a resolution authorizing the controller to transfer funds. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion passes. Moving on to economic development, ours 062121C, a resolution approving project agreement, Stefanato. Do we have Megan? Oh my God, I thought she was there.
It was quite an entrance. For the record, Megan.
It was a pop-up.
Right. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic and Community Development for the city. I'm sorry I didn't get down here soon enough. Tonight, I am very excited to present on the economic development agreement for Stefanato. Stefanato is an Italian company that we started working with, really as a result of our connections and relationship with Incog, the biopharmaceutical company that we brought before council in September. With Stefanato, they are a bio manufacturer of the glass vials, the easy-fill vials that are used for the majority of vaccines across the world and a majority of the COVID vaccines that are currently being manufactured. With this project scope, they requested and were looking for a space for about 300,000 square feet within a community that could recruit talent, that had a good tax climate, a good political environment. And so we were extremely excited to put together a proposal for them. Last Wednesday, we announced the project and their intent to come to Fishers. And so tonight, for our economic development agreement, we have a job commitment from them of approximately 250 new jobs to Fishers. They anticipate the average salary to be $70,000 for those 250 jobs. They have through 2030 to be able to hit those commitments, an investment of at least $140 million, and similar to what we've seen with some of our other pharmaceutical and life sciences companies, a lot of that is in the personal property. Again, planning to build about 300,000 square feet and occupy about 35 acres. The piece of this economic development agreement that you'll see in the bond documents that Lisa will present next is the city's intent to purchase the 75 acres that you'll see outlined here. That's at the intersection of 126 and Cumberland Road in Fishers. So it's the southwest corner, currently owned by Sunbeam. So Stefanato plans to take 35 of those acres, so we'll have about 40 acres left that we'll be able to recruit companies with to hopefully grow this pharmaceutical park in Fishers. In exchange for their project coming to Fishers, we are asking council to approve giving Stefanato 35 of those acres at this new pharmaceutical park, in addition to a commercial infrastructure grant of $2.6 million. As you can imagine, it's a greenfield site. This is a large manufacturer, so utilities will need to be improved, infrastructure, road networks need to be created to make this a feasible site for them. Additionally, we're asking for a 15-year, 100% personal property tax abatement on their eligible personal property. And tonight, Stefanato, their representatives are in Italy and unfortunately couldn't join us today, but I do have their consultants here from KSM Location Advisors, and have them come up and share a little bit of what ultimately led Stefanato to choosing Fishers.
Good evening, and thank you very much for some time on your agenda tonight and for your consideration. My name is Katie Culp. I am the CEO of KSM Location Advisors and a partner at Katz, Sappert, and Miller. And I would be remiss not to introduce Alexis Souter and Mark Mitchell, who also are on our team. And Alexis has worked long and hard on this project, as have the mayor and Megan and many others as part of the municipal team. So thank you. Megan and the mayor had asked me to speak a little bit about the genesis of this project, and we've certainly, the media and we all know firsthand how challenging life has been under a pandemic. And I must say, this is the one, I will always have this story of the international project that we tried to accomplish under pandemic conditions because, as you can imagine, so often with these site selection projects, walking around on the site and seeing them with one-zone eyes are, you know, are a really important part of it, and that was not possible due to the Italians' inability to travel here. I'd really like to compliment the Fishers Economic Development Team because this was an extremely competitive project, not just to land in Indiana, but once they selected Indiana, they were in very close competition with a few other communities around the Indianapolis region. And what I think really sets Fishers apart in its economic development strategy is rather than coming to the first meeting with kind of a cookie-cutter solution, they're able to really listen to what the needs of the clients were, and in this instance, offsetting the capital costs associated with the creation of this project. That was probably of paramount concern once you got past some of the site-location factors like labor force, quality of life, the other industries in this area. Once you kind of were at that decision-making point, it really became about, okay, how can we make the site most attractive in terms of offsetting some of these capital costs? So the group did what they do best, and they came up with some really creative solutions to address what Stefanato Group's specific concerns were. I know they are very excited and hoping, should everything move forward in the direction that we're optimistic that you may consider supporting, that we'll be able to have some of these folks over here when it's time to turn a shovel. Things are starting to make, be a little easier. So I just, I'm happy to answer any questions about the company. They would have loved to be here today, but have not yet been able to get access to the states. So we're hoping to, hoping that will change soon. But we're just really excited to be here. It is always a pleasure to work with Fishers, and it's not always, you know, they're not afraid of asking hard questions and negotiating closely along the way. But it's just been a great experience, and we're very appreciative. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Just a couple of things real quick. I know we appreciate you coming, and if you could extend that to them, and if you could talk a minute, I don't want to give specific names, but I know that some of the other jobs announcements we've had, I think that that helps lead them to look at Fishers. So I think that we've got kind of the ball-rolling in the right direction, so to speak.
Absolutely. In fact, that was one of the key factors as they were considering where to go, knowing that the city had made a commitment to life sciences development. And, you know, certainly Megan and her team can speak in greater depth to that, but you already have one building construction project going on right now, and I think there's a lot of optimism and hope that. and hope that future development in that vicinity will be occupied by those in similar spaces. And I, that was really part of what attracted them, was the idea that there would be some synergy with some of their neighbors and be able to, you know, while they're friendly competitors perhaps from an employment standpoint, when you have a large group of skilled workers in this space, you know, everybody wants the opportunity that if they want to change jobs, that they have someplace to do so without really dramatically impacting their commute time. So knowing that they're, they were in good company was a big influence in their location decision.
Great. Thanks.
Do I have a motion to approve R062121C?
So moved.
Motion by Pete, second by David, is now open for discussion. Any comments or questions from the council? Any more? I'm going to close the discussion and call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Moving on to R062121A, a resolution of the common council of City of Fishers. This is a lease between the Fishers Redevelopment Authority and the RDC. We have Lisa Bradford to introduce this.
For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. The item before you dovetails into what Megan just described, which is a bond issuance predominantly for the purchase of land at 126th and Cumberland, primarily related to Stefanato. So the item before you went before the Redevelopment Commission previously, where they held the public hearing on the lease, and they adopted the resolution, finding lease rentals fair and reasonable and approving the execution. After the RDC, it moved on to the Redevelopment Authority, who adopted the resolution approving the execution of the lease and authorizing the issuance of bonds or bands, therefore bringing it before you guys tonight. So as mentioned, there are a couple of projects wrapped into this bond that we've talked about. Most, the land acquisition, land acquisition at 116th and Allisonville, and then some other various infrastructure work for other projects. So right now, we are debating between one bond issuance or a bond anticipation note into a bond. So when we go to pull the trigger on financing, we will decide what's most advantageous at that time, but the documents before you have been written, so we have flexibility to do either one. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. I'll now open up for discussion. Any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, I'm going to now close the discussion and call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Moving on to R062121B, we have Lisa to introduce this.
Thank you. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. The item before you is a resolution that basically declares our intent to reimburse expenditures that we are planning to incur here in the upcoming weeks related to Fire Station 97. As you may recall, when we talked about the 2021 budget, we discussed and approved starting Fire Station 97 in the northeast corner of Fishers, in the Del Webb area. Waiting to get the land finalized for that deal, we kind of hesitated to take the bond out. So right now, we finally got the land agreed upon. We will be going to this former school site. So as we do that, now we're going to start incurring some costs to figure out utilities, IT, all that good stuff. So when this comes, we will actually reimburse these costs by the bond that will be taken out for Fire Station 97, but this just allows us to move forward on the project.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Motion by Cecilia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David. I'll now open it up for discussion. Any comments or questions from the council?
I have a comment. Fire Station 97 is another great example, as Dr. Borf mentioned, of the city and HSC schools working together. I just want to mention that and say thank you. This is a marvelous partnership.
And then the only comment I have, so I'll be abstaining from this. Not that I worked directly with the company building it, but I do have common ownership, so I will be abstaining from this vote.
Del Webb, thanks you very much. Right, Abe?
Okay. I'm going to now close the discussion and call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Aye.
Moving on to item number 10, R062121D, a resolution creating a city council task force to study certain city council procedures and policies regarding the committee process. We have Chris Greisel here to introduce this.
Thank you, President Stoller, members of the council for the record. Chris Greisel, City Attorney. That was a mouthful of a title that President Stoller went over to talk about, the task force to study committees. As you may recall, at our council retreat in May, we discussed the adoption and the development of a rules committee, and had a good discussion on that, and I left with a clear directive of going out and establishing a rules committee, and coming here and anticipating to come here before you tonight with a first reading of that ordinance. And when I started to go through our municipal code, our council rules or procedure, I quickly found out that we had a little bit more work to do in the sense that we don't have any formal processes or procedures or establishments for our committees to date. So when I mentioned this to council leadership, they thought now would be the perfect time to create the task force to go roll up our sleeves to create that process, not only for the rules committee, but all the standing committees that we have. So the task force and the resolution that's before you tonight creates the task force and gives them a specific directive of, I believe, 60 days or till our August council meeting, which is August 16th, to come back to make formal recommendations for the full council's consideration, whether that be legislative recommendations and/or recommendations to your council rules or procedures or additional bylaws, so that we have consistent procedures going forward with our committees. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Drapony? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Todd. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jocelyn. It is now open for discussion. Any comments or questions from the council? I would like to say that the task force, we have asked Councilor Kobel, Councilor Newman, myself, and Councilor Weingard will be on this task force. So we'll be meeting with Chris as we move this forward. So I'm now going to close the discussion and call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to item number 11.
Can I just jump in here really quickly? Items 11, 12, 13, and 14 are all voluntary annexations. I don't believe we need any staff reports on these. I think we can probably get through these pretty quickly, unless there's an objection from the council.
I did have a question about one item.
Which one?
Actually, my question was about the outcome of the fence discussion on the Play School property, if that had been resolved.
Do you want me to go ahead and address that now?
I think so.
I guess my point there is, I'd say Jocelyn doesn't have to do with annexation, and certainly she can answer that question, but I don't think that takes the form in annexation whether that occurs or not.
I don't disagree. It was a question I had, though, so maybe we can knock that out first. Yeah, I can address that. So at the plan, this did go through a text amendment process for this development, and so at Plan Commission, there was a commitment that was added, that there would be consistent fencing, and so we are reviewing that with the petitioner right now through the TAC review process.
Perfect. Good. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move these forward. Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll have a motion to approve item 11.
Motion to approve item 11. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 12.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Todd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item number 13.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Cecilia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number 14.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Crystal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Good job, Megan.
Thanks. You make me work hard.
Okay, we are now moving on to item number 15, a consideration of an amendment to propose an ordinance. This was brought up about setbacks by Brad. We have Megan to introduce this.
Yes. For the record, Megan Schaefer with the Planning and Zoning Department. So at last month's council meeting, staff was given the direction to take a look at the front building setback on the proposed airport text amendment, just to ensure that there weren't going to be any future issues with road widening. So we did take a look at this, and after comparing our standards to other communities and what our existing C3 district standards are, we are proposing to revise the front setback from 25 feet to 50 feet. This should be easily accommodated with any new development and really alleviates any of the concerns that were brought up on the future road widening. So the direction to council, so staff would recommend that you send this amendment back to Plan Commission for consideration of the revised front building setback from 25 to 50, and then if Plan Commission votes to approve, it would not come back before council, so it would become final at Plan Commission next month. And I can answer any questions that you might have on that process.
Brad, do you want to make a motion to amend this?
I'll make the motion. Thanks, Brad.
Okay. I'm going to request that the motion to include the 50-foot setbacks, front setbacks. So do I have a second for that emotion?
Second.
Second by Brad. Thank you. I'll now open it up for discussion. Any comments or questions from the council?
Does that motion need to include that the vote going back to Plan Commission, that that would be the final vote?
If it didn't, it was assumed. That's the statutory process. So council tonight, Plan Commission certified the proposal to council. Council's making a formal amendment and sending it back to the Plan Commission. If the Plan Commission approves, it's done.
Make sure.
So your motion is to approve the ordinance with the amendment that was stated by Pete and Selena and Brad?
Doesn't come back.
If they approve your amendment. No, it does not.
Say that again, I'm sorry. If the amendment is approved as presented here at the Plan Commission, that is the end of the matter.
That's correct.
And that's the final action.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Thank you, Megan.
Yes. Yeah, no problem.
Okay, I'm now going to close the discussion and call for a vote. All those in favor of approving with amendment to provide 50-foot front setbacks, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This amendment will go back to the Plan Commission, and upon their approval, the ordinance will be adopted and amended. Onto item number 16, consideration of amendment to the Fishers 2040 Comprehensive Plan. We have Megan to introduce this.
Yes, and I do have a presentation prepared for this one. Tracy will switch it over for us. So this is an amendment to the Fishers 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So every five years, we are tasked with revising or revisiting this plan and updating it with any needs that have changed in the community. And so this is the first five-year update for the Fishers 2040 Plan. So just a little background on the plan itself. So the purpose of the Fishers 2040 Plan is really to ensure fiscal sustainability as the community transitions from rapidly growing to a stable population by 2040, to ensure purposeful planning as we develop and redevelop towards a build-out scenario, and it provides direction and assists decision-makers with the short and long-range choices for improving the quality of life in Fishers. So really, this is our guiding document that we use to make decisions. The vision statement in the plan is that the City of Fishers is a smart, vibrant, and entrepreneurial city that provides an exceptional quality of life and fosters a culture of innovation and resiliency. And this was the vision statement that was included in 2016 when it was first adopted, and that remains true today. So a little history. It was adopted in June of 2016. There are annual progress that's presented to City Council and Plan Commission, and then included in the plan, as mentioned, we are required to update this every five years. So the plan itself is broken up into four main chapters. The first is land use, housing in neighborhoods, transportation, and parks. And this really makes up a bulk of the comprehensive plan. So the update process for us this year was really headed by a steering committee, and then it was, each chapter was given a subcommittee. There were four total steering and subcommittee meetings. We held these virtually, just due to the pandemic. 29 individuals were involved, and you guys were part of that process, so thank you for working with those subcommittees earlier this year. So progress to date, 149 actions were first identified in the plan. Since adoption in 2016, we have completed 72 of those action items. 54 have been started but are ongoing, and then 23 have not been started. One of the revisions to the plan included in this update really was reorganizing what the implementation chapter looked like. So here's just a snapshot for you. We created a table structure, so that way we can better track each one of the action items and where we are at in progress towards its full implementation, including notes and who's really leading that initiative. So something really great that came out of the update this year. So I'm going to briefly go over the different chapters and the new revisions that are being proposed. For land use, a significant portion of this chapter is the future land use map, which is really where we'd like to see these land uses by the year 2040. Back in 2016, there were 12, or I'm sorry, 11 study areas that were identified around the city that we weren't quite ready to make a decision on yet of what the future land use should be. So during this update, the land use subcommittee really took a look at each one of these areas to propose our future land use. I'm not going to go over each one of these areas, but I have, I am going to go over about three or four of them, which are just ones that I found to be either the most significant changes being proposed or just areas of interest. So the first is going to be Study Area 1, which is on the northwest corner of Allisonville and 96th Street. The future land use subcommittee identified this area really as parks and open space along the river. This is in a flood plain, so open space really makes the most sense for that portion of the land. Adjacent to that is proposed attached residential. So this would include a little bit higher-density residential development. And then neighborhood mixed use, right there on the corner of 96 and Allisonville Road. Neighborhood mixed use is really a lower-intensity commercial use, so office, daycare, dentist, commercial that would really match the residential character of the area. Special Study Area number four is on the northeast corner of 116th and Hoosier Road, so this is a very centrally-located parcel. It's 78 acres, and the committee designated this as really a split between core residential, which matches the surrounding existing development out there today, and then the other portion of it to be parks and open space, just due to the central location. They thought that keeping this as a public open space would be the best served use for this area. They also took a look at State Road 37 corridor, and so I'll just go over some of these land uses here. It does match pretty closely the existing development out there today. Along the interstate, or along the state road itself is proposed employment node, so this would really be creating regional employment opportunities. And then surrounding that would be flex employment, so professional offices, research and development, manufacturing. And then we've also got some pockets of that neighborhood service center, so that would be daily retail, personal service, commercial nodes, similar to what you would see at Fall Creek and Brook School Road. And then they also identified potential for a park up on the north, just south of 141st Street, along the Nickel Plate Trail. And then the last study area that I'll mention is the northeast corner of 116th Street and Interstate 69. So we've really seen this area grow as our entertainment district with Top Golf and the Fishers District, and so we'd like to see a similar type of development out here. And so we've identified it as regional mixed use, just to continue with the entertainment and regional draws of the area. and regional draws of the area. So new action items for this chapter, one is really to look at a strategy for how we can align our current zoning map with the future land use map to make sure we're getting the right type of development that we're, we're wanting to see. Establishing mixed use nodes where appropriate, that would allow for a mix of both residential and commercial. And then identifying future redevelopment areas in the city that we can focus on. Moving on to housing in neighborhoods, the housing subcommittee really was taking a look at what our existing housing stock is, what the demographics are, where they're projected to go, and then what additional development we can expect to see. So from that subcommittee, they identified really two main action items. So one was supporting the revitalization and upkeep of existing neighborhoods. We are a relatively young community, but as we age, we want to make sure that we are supporting neighborhoods in the best way we can. And then second to that is really establishing a housing task force, which the city is underway with that plan, and completing a housing study. So during Plan Commission, there was a recommendation to remove some of the new action items that were proposed for the housing chapter, really action items that focused on a housing strategy. And we'd like to just take a pause on that for a second while we conduct this housing study and have this housing task force really look at what our strategy should be moving forward, because we were, that subcommittee was really working with limited data. And so once we have more information on, on where we are at today and where we're expected to go, we'll come back before council with the recommendations on that strategy to include in the plan. So we're just taking a pause on that for right now. And then the transportation chapter. So this included some updates to our thoroughfare plan. I know this is really small, it just kind of shows you high level that most of the updates included intersection improvements or the addition of roundabouts. So you can see those blue circle there are additional roundabouts. We also updated our bike and pedestrian plan. The only update with this was just establishing the Nickel Plate Trail that's currently under construction. So you can see that highlighted in red here. And then the new action items for this chapter really focused on connecting the trail network. So looking at what areas we have gaps in our trail network and figuring out how best to fill those in. Also ensuring pedestrian safety was a big topic. So looking at pedestrian connections across the White River, looking at exit 205, and studying the I-69 corridor, just to focus on pedestrian safety in those areas. And then third was to support new mobility technology, specifically electrical vehicles. So this would be creating best practices for EV charging, updating the UDO to incorporate standards that address these types of technologies. And then the last chapter is the parks chapter. So Fishers does currently have over 770 acres of parkland. They're highlighted here, and this includes our new Geist Waterfront Park and Agri Park. And so the action items for this chapter was making sure that we're planning for future facilities. So we want to ensure that we maintain our park-to-resident ratio as our population increases. We also discussed in this subcommittee connecting the trail network, so how we can connect all of our parks through our trail system. Promoting health and wellness, so with the establishment of the Fishers Health Department, looking at how they can partner with the Parks Department to promote physical health, but also mental health, and then promoting art and culture. We did establish the Art and Cultural Master Plan a couple of years ago, and so looking at how we can further promote art and culture around the city through our Parks Department. So there were several opportunities for public input during this process. We did hold two virtual open houses that were very successful, one in April and one in May. Plan Commission had their public hearing on this on June 2nd, and then we are back before you tonight for a final adoption. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions, but staff does recommend approval.
Megan, I just want to tell you that you, you guys have done an amazing job. This is a big undertaking to, to evaluate this and work with everybody. And I commend you and your staff and everyone at the city staff level that has, you know, worked hard to put this together and for us.
I, may I? I served on the Housing and Neighborhoods Committee to study that chapter and a proposed update. And I just wanted to say I'm, I'm just enthusiastic about the task force and the consultant that is going to dig into that, those challenges that we have. Just a question that comes top of mind, when they have completed their work, which includes data collection, identification of needs and strategies moving forward, do you foresee not waiting five years, but making adjustments to this chapter based upon their findings?
Yeah, so I would anticipate, probably, I don't want to commit to any timeframe, but if, my expectation would be probably at the end of the year to come back before council with the housing strategy.
Good.
And I assume, Megan, just to clarify, that would come in the form of an amendment to the comp plan?
Correct.
Is that fair?
Yes.
So it would be adopted?
Excellent, thanks.
Yep.
I'm going to make a motion to approve, by the way.
Thank you. Motion by Pete, do I have a second?
Second.
We've had discussions, so I'm going to move on and close the discussion and call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item number 17, it is a consideration of an ordinance for a temporary signage policy for businesses impacted by State Road 37 construction. This is a first reading, and we have Megan here to introduce this to us.
Yes, thank you. And this is really a cleanup item. So as you all are aware, State Road 37 is currently under construction, and we've been working closely with the business owners and properties along that corridor, just to make sure that their customers are well-informed on how to access those locations during construction. And so with that, we have, we are proposing some deviations to our sign policy, just to allow for some additional temporary signage for these businesses, so they can properly point people to their entrances.
I'm okay to have first reading.
All right. First reading. Moving on to item number 18, a consideration of a text amendment to the city's UDO. And we have, again, Megan. She's our Person of the Night here to introduce this.
Yes, and this is the last item for Planning and Zoning. So thank you for bearing with me. So this is a proposed amendment to the city's Unified Development Ordinance. We've seen just nationwide changer, changes in consumer habits with big box stores going out of business. And so with these closures, we do anticipate to see a new series of tenants coming in to fill these large spaces in Fishers. A change of tenant for these large spaces does require more scrutiny and review because of the potentially adverse impacts upon the immediate neighborhood and the community. So staff is proposing amendment to the UDO that would really require any change of tenant for a space over 25,000 square feet or greater. That would include uses of both commercial and institutional, excluding medical or office, come before council for approval. And this is really just to have another set of eyes on these uses that go into these spaces, because they have a great impact on the character of the area that they sit. So this is first reading for this item. We would, this will go to Plan Commission next month, and then you'll see this back on the agenda for next month for final adoption.
Do I have any questions or comments from council? Seeing none?
Have first reading.
Thank you. Chris, do we, do we have any other unfinished or new business?
Nope.
Nothing? We will now open it up for community comment. If you have anything that you would like to say to the council, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be given three minutes to speak. Do we have any comments? Seeing none, I will close the community comment section, and we'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See you, Dr. Borf.